Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Concord Township Board of Trustees meeting for May 3rd, 2023. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Mrs. Lucci?
Here.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Present.
Mr. McIntosh?
Present. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from April 19th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the April 19th, 2023 regular trustees meeting minutes.
And I will second that motion.
A discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Elected officials report. Fiscal Officer, Mr. Jim Teckner.
Thank you, Morgan. As of April 30th, we were 33% of the way through the calendar year. The treasury balance of the 21 active funds within the township's treasury was $11.8 million. The treasury balance also includes $5.9 million in funds which have been set aside for specific projects. Year-to-date expenditures were 33% of the amount appropriated for the year 2023. Revenue received year-to-date is 48% of the estimated revenues for 2023. So as you can see, we are well, or we are within budget. Today, we received our first half Ohio homestead exemption and rollback property taxes from Lake County Auditor. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call the Town Hall Fiscal Office at 440-354-7516. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustees, Mrs. Lucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had the privilege of swearing in some new firefighters today. And we thank them for their service. We congratulate them on their accomplishments. Welcome to the family. And we're always so proud. Seems to be a lot of uncertainty still with electric bills. I got a few calls from some residents regarding, you know, what decisions they wanted to make and what information we can give them. And I did give them our meeting last time where we had a NOPEC liaison give us information. We talked about the apples-to-apples website, which compares prices. There are still opt-out options if deadlines are met by June 1st. But a lot of questions still regarding electrical and utilities. We did have our Lake County Township meeting where our county engineer gave us his annual update. We were informed of some township roads, bridges in need of repair, including one of our own, Williams Road. And we are looking to gain support from the county to assist in some of those getting repaired. We are obviously very concerned about safety, making sure residents can get to their home, and obviously making sure our first responders can get to where they need to get to in a timely manner. So very, very concerned about that. More to come and to discuss on the subject. We did have a staff meeting yesterday and heard updates from each of our departments. We look forward to our fire building near completion. I did attend an OTA leadership class where we discussed ethical leadership. I did have a couple of questions about some block watches in neighborhoods. And I did notice in the e-Grapevine, there was a nice article about Sergeant Enfalvi as our community liaison from the sheriff's office and pointed the residents in his direction. So we thank him for his service. We have Mother's Day coming up in the next weekend, so I'm wishing all the moms a very happy Mother's Day. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lucci. Mr. Don Dorfer?
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. First off, I'd like to thank our staff here, Mr. Brown, Mr. McIntosh, Mr. Rose, for representing the township at Arbor Day. That went out very well. We had a lot of residents out here, so thank you for that. I was not present due to a conflict, but we appreciate that. Congratulations again to our new firefighters that were sworn in tonight, four new part-timers. It's a great addition to our safety services here in the township. And they're coming in at a great time with the near completion of Station 1 and then on the horizon, Station 2. So welcome to them. Yes, we also had a staff meeting earlier in the week where we got updates from all of our department heads. And everybody's doing a fantastic job. I did receive a few calls since the last meeting. I spoke with one resident that was concerned with the potential closing of Williams Road that lives on Williams Road. So I am in contact with him. And I know we're working with the county on that potential closure. Had some questions about the sewer issue at a residential development. I know we all took an email regarding that and whether or not those are private sewer lines or somebody else's responsibility. So we're working with the residents on that issue. And I had a call and some emails from a resident regarding a zoning issue that we've taken enforcement action on in the past that I'm going to follow up on. And other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Don Dorfer. I've, yeah, it's been actually a busy couple of weeks. I've had some questions about NOPEC as well. I did have a conversation with some residents about the work at Brightwood Lake, or formerly Brightwood Lake, now to become Big Creek, or return to Big Creek. That's going on and should be completed early this summer. I did have some conversations about some zoning violations and complaints. Did also, yes, the sewer issue, which is something we're ongoing. Arbor Day was, you didn't miss a lot, except for sideways blowing rain and a tent. It was, thank you for the Service Department putting that up, because if you didn't do that, it would have been miserable. I brought Cooper with, and he was a big hit. I think the Garden Club is more interested in seeing my dog than me. But we had a nice time. And Jim and I were there. And I did want to just take a minute to thank Jim, because he brought an interesting point that we haven't really done on Arbor Day, but that the notion of it is that we're planting trees and that, but that you also dedicate or recognize. And he took the time to recognize and dedicate the tree to Jamie Dawson. So another, thank you for that, Jim. That means a lot to a lot of people in Concord. And I know that you're doing a great job filling in for her. And I think she'd be very pleased. But the LCTA meeting as well, we've been busy with that. I was at the Commissioners' meeting last week as well, thanking them, because as you know, the Lake County Township Association presented funding requests, but we offered to match dollars and asked to share some of those dollars with the Commissioners. And I know that that made our request interesting to them. And so we're proceeding with that. Those things are going along. And so we'll be looking at doing some water lines here in Concord Township. Earlier today, with the Fire Department Administrator Rose and Services Director Brown, we went to the Proudery Road pre-construction meeting. So very excited to hear from all of the participants in that. Going to be a nice, we're getting some drain improvements, several, two sections are getting drain improvements. One is getting two, another one's getting three. That is going to result in some lane closures for short periods of time. And then we listened to their managing of traffic and how that's going to be going on. So it's going to be, it's going to be a dicey project. Should start sometime this month, sometime during the month of May. Weather-dependent, don't really know. Don't have all the sequencing completely laid out yet, but should take us into the summertime and hopefully be done before summer's over. I did walk the fire station today and had a project meeting with the team after our last trustee meeting. Have another follow-up meeting tomorrow. Architect, owner's rep, construction company, a lot of nice progress. You can really start to see things take shape. And I walked out of there just feeling really proud of everything that the team is doing and just feel so good about what we're being able to give our first responders and not just the staff of our fire department, but our residents. I mean, this ultimately is going to help us continue the excellent service that our fire department delivers to our community. And I think this is something that the community will be proud of. So, and with that concludes my report. Department reports. Administrator Andy Rose.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh, members of the board, Mr. Teckner, members of the audience. Good evening. Just one quick item that's on the agenda, Item B. That is a purchase order to our engineer, CEC. That is for construction management and inspections of the Service Department's storage building project. So I would request a favorable vote there. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
You said it was quick. That was fast. Fire Department Chief Sabo.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So for the month of April, we completed a total of 230 incidents, including 152 EMS events with 117 transports to local hospitals. We had 78 non-EMS events, including, in addition, we had six fire events. Inside of Concord, we had two fires. One was an outdoor fire that spread. And then we had one mulch fire. Outside of Concord, we responded and assisted with four fires, three structure fires, and one grass fire. So our fire counts are a bit up lately around the area. We gave Mutolade 14 times, received Mutolade seven times, and we had 65 overlapping calls for 28% of our call volume. This time last year, we completed a total of 879 incidents. So far, year-to-date, this year, we're already exceeding that with 907. So last year, we set a record, and this year, we're on pace to set a new one. So the Fire Prevention Bureau completed 52 inspections for about 90 hours, did four plan reviews for about 10 hours, and completed 10 hours of continuing education. From the public education standpoint, they offered two CPR and fire extinguisher trainings, one for a doctor's office, a staff of eight, and one for a scout troop and their parents. With about 14 people participated in that. On March 27th, Concord Fire, with the help of Hamden Fire, the Lake County Sheriff's Office, University Hospital AirMed staged a mock incident at Auburn Career Center, representing a DUI crash with four victims and a fatality. This was a drill for their prom promise. Thirty public safety students enrolled at Auburn Career Center, assisted in the drill and demonstration, providing support to the firefighters and playing victims. So they were all moulaged up and bloodied. And it was quite a scene. The goal of the mock crash presentation is to curb drinking and driving during teenage prom celebrations and distracted driving. So it went off very well. There was about 250 students and staff that participated and watched that event. So that was, that was very good. So as we nearly get closer and closer day-to-day to the completion of the fire station, we are anxiously awaiting. And we continue to be thankful to this board and to the township residents for their continued support that allowed us to take on a project like this. It's exciting to see the slow but steady pace that the project has taken on. So we're excited to get moving in and celebrate with a ribbon cutting and especially with this being our 75th anniversary. So it's, it's a good thing. Lastly, just thank you to the board for your kind words about the fire department, you know, especially as we swore in four new part-time firefighters today. A lot goes into being a firefighter at Concord Township. And, you know, I'm biased. I only know what I know here, right? But they go through an extensive process. Before they even come to us, they have to complete their fire certification, their EMT Basic or Paramedic, just to allow us to look at them. Then they go through an interview process. Then their names are put before you with a conditional offer of employment. Then they go to a medical physical and background check. If they pass those, then they come to us for orientation, which is two days. Then they're put on the, on staff. And they're, they're expected. They have, they have a book they have to complete. So they have to have check-offs on every piece of apparatus, every piece of equipment. By the time that they're done with their probationary period, they know that truck just as well as somebody that's been there for 10 years. So it's, it can be a long process, but it's definitely worth it. It's neat to see the senior firefighters taking the new guys under their wing. And it's, it's a great culture that the firefighters have developed over there, especially with the leadership of Deputy Chief and even down to our fire inspectors. They do a phenomenal job in just making sure that we keep that culture where it needs to be and drawing great talent from across Northeast Ohio. So we appreciate you and look forward to more stuff to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Service Department, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Service Department in the month of April began curb inlet repairs throughout the township, along with concrete joint repairs and pothole patching. Our drainage crew is outperforming ditch maintenance and responding to some minor flooding complaints. Other crews have been taking care of some sod damage from winter plow season. We are working with the Lake County Stormwater Department on some future stormwater enhancement projects. These projects are still in the planning stages. Friday, April 28th, Concord Township celebrated the Arbor Day with a planting of a celestial shadow dogwood just outside the entrance to Town Hall. In addition to the Arbor Day planting, the Concord Garden Club sponsored a Frontier Elm as their legacy reforestation project that's planted over next to the pickleball courts. A big thank you to Klein Nursery for their generous donation of both trees. In addition, thank you to the Garden Club for braving the weather to attend the Arbor Day planning and to the Service Department personnel that assisted with the planning. Saturday, May 6th, the Service Department will host their first of two Brush Day collections at the Service Department. Residents may drop off brush and yard waste from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Yard waste is to be in paper biodegradable bags. Brush is not to exceed four inches in diameter. No stumps, railroad ties, landscape timbers, or lumber is permitted. The second date of the Brush Days is May 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The yard waste drop-off is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The Service Department road resurfacing projects, along with Lake County Engineers' projects, will be beginning in the middle of May and lasting through the summer months. We remind residents to allow for more travel time in the areas affected and to slow down and move over when approaching work zones. Residents with questions or concerns may contact the Service Department, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., at 440-350-3225, or by email at concordtp.com under Service Department. And Service Department would like to wish all the moms a happy Mother's Day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. I was wondering, Mr. Freeman? Good evening.
Hey, good evening. So during the month of April, the zoning department processed 37 zoning permit applications and collected roughly $6,100 in fees. The majority of the permits were for accessory uses such as pools, decks, and fences, but there were also seven new homes that were approved to be constructed. We also approved the zoning permit for the new car wash, Johnny's Auto Spa in Detail, which is going to be located at 7879 Oak Cryle Road. According to their Facebook page, Johnny's will feature 140-foot conveyor belt, tunnel car wash, for detail bays and vacuums. And construction should be coming for the next upcoming weeks. That project also will have the ice cream parlor that everyone's dying to have as well. That'll be started later this year, not, not at the same time as the car wash. Additionally, our staff was busy performing inspections. We inspected 70 properties with open projects and followed up on five new complaints about potential zoning violations. And just a reminder to our residents, if you have any questions, please reach out to our department. If you have questions about your property, zoning, we can be reached by phone or email. If you go to our website at concordtp.com, you can find our contact information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Recreation Department, Mr. Spler.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Recreation Department is in full swing and getting ready for a busy summer. I just wanted to go over a few events that we had recently here for the Rec Department. This afternoon, we had hosted our Mother's Day Tea Event at the Community Room. We had 54 seniors registered for the event and a long waitlist of people looking to get in for that. I want to give a special shout-out to the Recreation Staff, Rachel Lamb and Tracy Butler, for putting together the event and really decorating the community room and making it look very nice for our guests. And as well to our chefs for the event, Suzie Cobb from the Recreation Department, who cooked up some delicious chicken salad and ham salad. And then her mother, mother-in-law, and aunt, who all baked delicious cookies as well. On April 21st and 22nd, we hosted our Spring Garage Sale at the Community Center. We had 24 vendors for that. And we had over 300 patrons come through the doors for that event over the two-day course of it. All the feedback was very positive from our vendors. We sent out a survey afterwards, and everyone was very satisfied with how it went. And our next garage sale scheduled for October 13th and 14th. Our spring session of rookie sports soccer is currently underway. We have somehow gotten two weeks in with this weather, so that has been good. We got rained out tonight. We had 21 total kids signed up, ages three to five, for that. It's a really great number for us, considering our minimal advertising that we were able to do for that. So very happy with that. Our rookie sports baseball program is coming up, starting June 13th, and we already have over 20 kids for that as well. So really great numbers for us. Lastly, our first session of our preschool learning play ended last week. That was another huge success for us. A big shout-out to Rachel and Tracy from the Recreation Department, who put together a great curriculum and really fun and informative class for the kids for that. So really good job by then. Actually, this is our last thing. Here, our Intro to Pickleball for Adults started this past Saturday. That's taught by Brian Murphy. We have 20 people signed up for that. And I think Chief Sabo will be happy to know, we don't have any employees signed up for that class. Some upcoming events. This coming Friday, there's always important Red Cross Blood Drive at Community Center. That's from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. And next Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 to 11:30 is the Garden Club Plant Sale at the Community Room as well. Some of the 55-plus events we've got coming up. May 10th is a Watercolor Pen and Ink Greeting Card Class. It is taught by our very own Rachel Lamb, and that is full with 32 people. May 17th is a Make and Take Mini Plant Flower Workshop, also by our staff, and flower supply by our own Tracy Butler's greenhouse called Butler Hill Bloom. And that is full with 20 people. Lastly, in May is our Spring Theme Bingo, and that's on May 24th. And then our also reminder that we have a Thursday Morning Hiking Club, taught by Rachel Lamb. And anyone that's interested in that can contact her, and she can tell you all about that. The Community Room, we only have two dates between now and the end of August that are available for rentals. So it is very popular there right now. A lot of graduation parties and first convenions and all sorts of stuff. So it's a busy place there right now, which is great for us. And then just some other facilities, our pickleball and tennis, our tennis courts are currently open and ready to be played on. Everyone should have received the e-Grapevine in May. That was distributed May 1st. I hope you, everyone that's signed up, received that. If you're not receiving that, let us know, and we can help you get signed up for that. Our printed summer grapevine is going to be mailed out hopefully by the end of this week and should be reaching households sometime next week. So please be on the lookout for that. We are very excited with how that turned out. And then our summer event preview, we have our Summer Concert Series, first one coming up just a little bit over a month from now. So summer is approaching quickly. That's on June 8th. And that goes till July 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 here at the Town Hall gazebo. Our full lineup and food trucks and everything else that is, that will be at each one of those is posted on the website and will also be in the grapevine. Just want to make one note, if you notice in the printed grapevine, the schedule for the concerts, there's a slight change to the food truck schedule. We were actually able to get Frank Brots come back for a couple of shows.
Yes.
So they'll be there for July 6th and 27th. I figured everyone would be happy with that. So, but that was, that change happened after the grapevine was printed. So there is a slight change to that. And then our other major event for the summer is our Community Day, and that is Saturday, August 12th. Lots of great activities planned for that. A bike safety and education program in the morning. The Fire Department Pancake Breakfast that we hope will be at the new fire station. If not, it'll be held here at Town Hall in the tent. And the return of the Concord Parade as well. And we're looking for any businesses or HOAs or residents, anyone who wants to participate in that, let us know. We can email you out the application for that. And then evening time is our Kids World and DJ, we have a Kids DJ and karaoke, new bounce houses, a reptile show, and the always famous frog jump. And then our two bands are Blue Evolution and Jersey Beats that night. Please continue to sign up for the e-Grapevine. We always are updating programs each month, trying to come up with new ideas. So please make sure you sign up for that. And again, if you don't receive the summer grapevine, the printed one, please give us a call at 440-639-4650, and we'll make sure we get you one. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And closing out departments, Concord Law Enforcement. Tonight, we have Captain Patterson.
In reference to the grapevine feature on Sergeant Enfalvi, too, we appreciate that. He certainly does do a lot. And I was privy to a preview on that before it went on. Again, we say thank you for that. The total calls for the month of April, calls for service, we ended up with 1,139. We had one injury accident and five damage accidents. That is 10 less accidents in comparison to last month. As far as arrests go, we arrested an adult male for domestic violence from Ridge Glen condos, a juvenile male for domestic Chestnut Street, an adult male for B&amp;E. This was relating to the new Concord Fire Station. And I believe a certain fire chief assisted a little bit on that case. So we did get a male charged with felony on that. And we are also continuing to investigate a second suspect accomplice for that case. And I believe we are filing for warrants on that party tomorrow morning. So we have another, another one involved on that. We made an arrest of an adult male for violating a protection order on a traffic stop from State Route 84 and State Route 44. Juvenile male was arrested for domestic violence on Wood Duck Ave. We arrested an adult male for OBI at State Route 84 and 44. We actually assisted the Escobula County Sheriff's and OSP the last week of April. They were in a pursuit on I-90 during the evening hours. It was going westbound. They requested stop sticks, which we, which we assisted. And they were able to successfully get an arrest made of an adult male, believe he's from the city of New York. And they had charges relating to drugs in that vehicle. So we were able to assist with that. We, we did two K-9 deployments where we assisted on traffic stops for drug detection, but there were no alerts. We had two, two arrest warrants, I believe one, one of those involved probation. We assisted them and made an arrest warrant of a, of a female on Ravenna Road, and then another one on Buckingham Place. 57 alarms, 10 citations issued, 148 traffic warnings issued. We covered 68 business checks within the community, 146 crime prevention checks. I'll go through some of the investigative numbers here. 15 animal complaints we responded to. We responded to 27 disabled vehicles to assist, 11 disturbances, 11 domestic violence reports, complaints, seven drug investigations, seven forgeries, I'm sorry, seven harassments. We were involved with six mental health situations. Looks like we had an opiate overdose of one adult female on Pelkin. Scams, we had seven. We would like to caution the community again in reference to scams. They can, they can, as in one case, we saw that they can really suffer a monetary loss that's significant. And we want to just put that caution out there again. If you're, you know, laryid something, a situation, you know, relying on a friend, family member for some added insight, or feel free at any time to call us to come out and help verify the legitimacy on some of these fraudulent scams. In one case, it was a virus alert that popped up on an Apple computer. And it just led to withdrawals from bank accounts and such. So we can help in a lot of ways with that. We oftentimes like to post regarding that on our, on our, on our website and on our app. As far as... our app as far as some tips to avoid the trap. Also, I know the Ohio Attorney General's Office has some, some good tips on their, their webpage as well. So we'd like to extend that offer. Continuing, we had a shots fired complaint, which fortunately it was deduced to a vehicle backfiring. We were actually able to follow up and see on a video camera that it was a, same time was a vehicle backfire. Continuing, we had 27 traffic complaints. We centered some details on Brightwood Drive after complaints at, during the bus stop hours where children were out there at the stop. We had actual, there was one vehicle in particular that was apparently going through the stop sign at that time. So we, we put some enforcement out in that area and we, we did get some, some stops in. I believe we got a site in. It just was for a different, a different individual that didn't wish to stop for the stop sign. 19 welfare checks, and that's about it for the stats. I wanted to make a point to say we have Deputy Taylor Tukovic and Deputy Charles Galog with our office who are attending the police mountain bike training. So you can expect to see them out in the community, especially with the weather breaking. That should be soon. It's a great virtual, versatile way to augment patrols and a great way to interact with the residents. And again, among many projects we currently have underway at the sheriff's office, we're excited to say the multi-purpose training range out in Painesville Township at the, it's being built at the side of the Lake County Sheriff's Office range on Blaze Nameth is nearing completion. We're hoping in a month's time, we'll be able to see some finalization develop. This, this will lend its use to police agencies within the county to conduct and host a variety of training. It's designed for indoor and outdoor, outdoor opportunities used in modern-day policing. It will accommodate for proficiencies in areas of firearm simulated training, less-than-lethal training, defensive tactics, precision rifle shooting, and much more. So that's kind of where we're at. We, we understand that training is obviously very important. It's very important, helps ensure that we can continue to offer and provide high standards of service, public service to our citizens. So with that, if there's any questions, concerns, requests, don't hesitate to call us. A number here we can, we can put out is 440-350-5598.
Thanks, Captain. Certainly staying busy.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, I had the opportunity this week to tour that new training center on the final completion stages, and I was just in awe of what the, the county has done over there, you know? From when I was there, it was just a, a module trailer that we seized on a, on a, it's part of a forfeiture. And now the training center is amazing. They're going to have a simulator in there for dynamics, shooting situations. The classroom is amazing. The range has been refurbished. They're going to put a module, modular unit there with movable walls so you can get acclimated with Sims rounds training, get, you know, state-of-the-art, you know, training. It's going to be a collaboration with all the departments in Lake County as well as the range instructors for each department working together to formulate great training for, you know, law enforcement in the county. So it's, it was amazing. So, nice job.
So the Sheriff's Department came up at the, the pre-con meeting today on Proudly Road. I talked to them and I said, well, we're going to have to call the Sheriff's Department because once that road gets improved, we're going to have a speeding problem.
Yeah. It's going to be where the trailer will be.
Because it's bad enough that I think right now we don't get a lot of speeding on it, but there's a couple of sections, but as soon as it opens up, we're. I mean, we, we walk the subdivisions in a lot too as well, and it's springtime now, people are out and we got to slow down folks. But anyway. I don't see any audience, so we'll be moving on to our old business, of which there is none. So next step is to get into the new visits and our votes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the April financial report.
And I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the purchase order to CEC Incorporated in the amount of 30,700 for construction management and inspection of the Concord Township Service Storage Building.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve PO in the amount of $6,090 to Customers Electric LTD for upgraded LED lighting at the Concord Community Center, and this is paid for with NOPEC Energy Grant.
And I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes? Okay, so next we've got the amendments, and just confirming with legal, we do need to vote on those one at a time.
All 11 separately.
So I move to approve zoning amendment number one, revised section 5.02A 105, indoor commercial recreation to allow a restaurant as an accessory use.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, before maybe we go into the second amendment, if there's any comment, does anybody want to?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, these all have to be roll call votes.
Oh, that's okay.
All right, so we'll just start over. Is there any comments you want to make just before we get into this? I know Heather gave us a nice presentation, so maybe if you want to throw some discussion out there and then we can vote. I, I don't see anything specifically that needs mention. I think the zoning commission took up some things we talked about and did a little housekeeping.
Yeah, I think they did a good job.
Did a good job.
Took some of the planning commission's recommendations and I did, I have no questions.
Okay, so I will need a new motion for amendment one in a second.
So I move to amendment one, revised section 5.02A 105, indoor commercial recreation to allow a restaurant as an accessory use.
I'll second.
And roll call vote, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve amendment two, revised section 22.03, Table of Uses to amend the list of permitted uses, conditional uses, and accessory uses in the commercial and industrial districts.
And I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I move for amendment three to approve the revised section 22.07E for charity boxes to limit the number allowed and add location requirement.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve amendment number four, revised section 13.08, child or adult daycare center to eliminate reference to the M and RD2 districts and require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
And I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I move to approve amendment number five, revised section 13.16, adult group home to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve amendment six, revised section 13.19, research and development labs to allow in the Gateway Health District.
And I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I move to approve amendment number seven, revise, revised section 13.21, garden or nursery retail sales, non-wholesale to allow in the B2 general business district.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I will, I will make a motion to approve amendment number eight, revised section 13.25, gas stations to delete capital district and to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
And I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I move to approve amendment number nine, revised section 13.26, car wash to delete capital district and to add conditions for accessory uses and vacuum areas.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve amendment number 10, revised section 13.32, outdoor storage and/or display in association with a permitted or conditional use to add location and screening requirements for outdoor storage areas.
And I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
I move to approve amendment number 11, revised section 13.36, innovative site PD to require the plan to indicate the precise use or land use proposed and to add permitted air, permitted uses and revise accessory uses allowed in the district.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
All right, and then items voted on in the staff meeting, which was yesterday, May 2nd. Mr. Don Dorfer approved the salary increase for Selena Stotka of $1,500 a year after successful completion of six-month probation or orientation period per offer letter. Mrs. Lucci seconded and three in favor. Mrs. Lucci approved, moved to approve fire department promotion of Colin Chambers, regular firefighter EMT basic effective April 15th, 2023. Mr. Don Dorfer seconded, voted three in favor. Mr. Don Dorfer moved to approve fire department promotion, Alex Kenzinger, to regular firefighter paramedic effective April 15th, 2023. Mrs. Lucci seconded, three in favor. And lastly, Mrs. Lucci moved to approve Ashley Garikar as BZA alternative effective May 2nd, 2023, to expire May 1st, 2025. Mr. Don Dorfer seconded and three in favor. So that takes care of our new business and future meetings and announcements.
Yes, on May 10th at 7:00 p.m., there will be a BZA meeting held at Town Hall. On May 17th, there'll be several meetings. The first one starts at 6:30 to 7:15. That'll be the trustee office hours in the conference room. And then at 7:15 p.m., there will be a public hearing at Town Hall. And at 7:30 p.m., the trustee meeting will begin at Town Hall.
All right, thank you. And with that, we will adjourn. Good evening.